Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Deidre Wynn?
There.
Commissioner Fan Wu?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Vice Chair Kim Wu?
Here.
Chair Brodean?
Here.
And let the record show that Commissioner Buckless is absent.
We have one card for oral communications called Bernadette Martinez.
Hello. I just want to say what an honor it is to see all of you. I am like starstruck because they're amazing and thank you so much. I'm sorry, and I look so grubby because I was at the library all day. But I would like to talk today about un-housing. I'm a recipient of rapid rehousing. I am diagnosed by four L's since age of 12. Four L's personality disorder since age of 30 by UCI and Charter Hospital. I recently spoke at the board supervisors meeting. And I'm just going to quickly read through this. There is no absolute reason to have towed my vehicle and every reason to return it without excess fees. I know this because of similar situation. LA County Supervisor, Chief Haskins Office Deputy Nick Holden assisted me to reclaim my vehicle with all cost weight. Fact, they gave me three reasons as to why my vehicle was towed. Refused to provide proof of violation except not the registered owner. Unpleased report number. They are not being honest. The sergeant I spoke with confirmed it was a public tow. My mental health is already shaken, to say the least. And actually, I focus on why the city of Garden Grove noticed or suspected mayor's office Secretary Pam as the manager, of all whom I reached out to, as of 9/12/22, no response from management. After waiting for several days and increased my fees over hundreds of dollars, I went on Wednesday, $1,300 cash and one-day moving permit and the title still the police CSO Brantman bills. The department did not want to follow health and safety code. I'd manly impossible get a certificate of pass tomorrow. I was a Friday on offer up. So that was a vehicle tow that was done. My landlord, who has been harassing me at my home, but I've lived there since February, has had two of my vehicles towed. And I've been through a lot through the city of Garden Grove. As of June 2015, is my get wealthy to live. Highly suicidal, three bell attempts, over 2050 and 50s and 15250. Numerous hospitalizations. Poor life personality disorder. I have been a fighter my entire life since being abandoned by my father in age one. With all that being said, three days after the Garden Grove police came to my home, what I thought was to help me, like the sergeant who called me on Thursday, the 26th of August, advised me wanted to stop by to see if they could help. Rather, I went through all my extreme hardships, the issue with the landlord abuse, harassment, Fear Howling Foundation has opened a plane, two vehicle losses. He was aware of the mental health crisis when I disclosed the first peek of residency because his wife came to my back door and bedroom window yelling at 3:00 AM about my emotional support animal, my fluffy green-eyed calico cat. She is at times all I have to talk to and love me back. The madman wife is angry. She said my cat will grow up. They reside beneath me. Three-day notices on my front door for everyone to see to pay or quit when my rent is paid by Pathways of Hope Rapid Rehousing. Rather than rather threaten to take away my parking. Just today, I asked Garden Grove to come out. They changed the locks in my garage, all my stuff in there. And they still don't do anything. They said it's a civil matter, but all my stuff is in there. So my children were abducted. I'm dealing with a probate case in LA County. To say the least, I have a lot on my shoulders right now. I'm a full-time law student, the 4.0 grade average. And these are all the three-day pay or quit notices from my landlord.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
And time is something you've talked about.
Yeah, these are actually for... I'm speaking here. Why not anybody?
Just to clarify, this is the housing commission? The housing authority, I should say. And the items, if you're here to speak, would be for items that would be on the table today related to housing, related to the housing program. With that, I have no other cards. Is there anybody else who would like to address the housing authority? See, none. We will move to consent. To where?
Yeah. A second.
Motion and a second. Okay.
Mr. Tamlin? Commissioner Bittner?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Louie?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Chair Brodean?
Commissioner O'Neil?
Commissioner Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
Yes, Mr. Chair. With relation to the speaker that just spoke about it, I also receive a request now, you know, here and there sometimes with similar issues where it is clearly civil matters. But it's very sad that they seem to be in very, very distraught and very difficult situation. Do we have any flexibility in assisting them or refer them to some free legal? Because a lot of time, they cannot afford too, you know, too high a lawyer.
So the county does have, there are some nonprofits that provide legal services, legal aid societies. The city cannot provide that assistance because of the requiring state law that the attorney has to represent the client. And so... So they would have to qualify for the legal aid assistance programs in the county and state.
Can we provide a list of agency or phone number or website where they can go to in order to ask for help?
Well, we have the names. We'll talk about the speaker.
Thank you.
See, and that was the German meeting. The next Garden Grove Housing Authority will be Tuesday on Thursday.
Thank you. I'll reconvene council and before we head on to presentations, let me maybe turn it over to City Manager Scott Sales to make a big introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I did want to take this opportunity real quick before the meeting starts to introduce you to the two newest members of our executive management team. You'll interact with them, and I wanted you to just meet them. I might start by first asking our new Division Fire Chief from OCFA, Chief Craig Covey, to come forward. Let me just tell you a little bit about Chief Covey. He began his emergency services career in 1990 as an emergency medical technician and paramedic. In 1994, he became a firefighter, paramedic with the city of Leonard Park Fire Department and joining the Orange County Fire Department that same year with the transition of fire protection services. In the nearly three decades since, Chief Covey worked his way up the OCFA ranks, promoted to battalion chief in 2015. All the while, Chief Covey continuously worked to expand his experience in various leadership positions, including as a search team member and task force leader on OCFA's FEMA Urban Search and Rescue California Task Force Five, a crew chief and program manager for air operations, a division administrative captain, vice chair of the Firescope Aviation Working Group, an operations section chief for OCFA's All Hazard Incident Management Team One. In 2019, Chief Covey also managed the initial implementation of the Fire Integrated Real-Time Intelligence System pilot program. And council members will know as our new Division One Fire Chief, Chief will have responsibility for Garden Grove, Los Alamos, CO Beach, and Westminster, which is, covers Division One. Now, the chief resides in Costa Mesa with his wife for 26 years and his two grown children. And so we're thrilled to have him join our management team. And Chief, would you like to say a word to it?
Mr. Mayor, council, this is an incredible opportunity and really excited for it. This was the division I was hoping to get with this promotion this summer. And I look really forward to working with you, your staff, and sort of seeing some of Garden Grove. It's a very exciting one.
Awesome. Welcome, welcome. Secondly, I know we were all disappointed to lose our good friend Dan Eifert. But we have recently selected and promoted Mr. Elvaro Castiome as our new budget manager and Director of... Let me tell you that Elvaro came to us from the city of Santa Fe Springs. He was a senior budget analyst overseeing the city's budget administration and treasury management functions. Elvaro led the restructuring of the city's budget book and achieved its very first distinguished budget award from the Government Finance Officers Association. Before Santa Fe Springs, Elvaro worked with the city of Santa Ana for six years. He started as a management intern, budget aide, and quickly grew into a key member of the financing administration team. During the course of his career there, Elvaro led the development of the city's five-year general fund forecast and long-range financial plan. And he completed multiple debt refinancing activities to achieve sizable savings for the city. Elvaro has a bachelor's degree in political science from the University of California Riverside and a master's degree in public administration from the University of Southern California. He lives in La Marana with his wife Anna and four children, though last of whom was just born last week. And I have no idea why he's here tonight. So we're thrilled to have Elvaro join our executive management team. And Elvaro, would you like to say a word or two?
Yes, of course. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for the introduction. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am, it is an absolute honor and pleasure to join this wonderful city and organization. I'm very excited. I am looking forward to learning more about our city and working with the exceptional staff that we have here to keep our community moving forward. Again, I am so excited, looking forward to it, and thank you. Thank you for it.
And I'll just say, council members, we'll all get to know Elvaro a little more in the coming months as we prepare for our budget retreat and start looking at preparations for our new biennial budget next year. So anyway, thank you, Elvaro.
Yay. Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty, thank you. So we'll go back on track. Takes us on to item one, presentations. We do have two for tonight. So we'll start with 1A.
Item 1A is a community spotlight celebrating Truco, founder and CEO of Saigon Broadcasting Television Network in recognition for his lifetime achievement of 40 years as a well-known songwriter and composer. And Ms. Maria Stipe will give the community spotlight.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize Truco, founder and CEO of Saigon Broadcasting Television Network in Garden Grove for his 40-year achievement as a musician. Would Truco please come forward? We can just stand right here, and I'm going to say some really wonderful things about you, and then we'll give you an opportunity to speak. So here I go, okay? Truco left his home in Vietnam in 1981 when he was 16 years old. He traveled for seven days through Cambodia and Thailand by foot, bicycle, train, and cargo bus. Truco's experience as a political refugee inspired him to express his feelings through music. Today, Truco is an award-winning Vietnamese-American composer and musician, renowned for his hundreds of compositions, most notably his love songs. When asked about his love songs, Truco said, "My love songs are not fiction, but pages of memoirs documenting real love that came to me and loved me." You look confused. Therefore, it is deeply imprinted in my memory and has deep meaning in my heart. In celebration of Truco's love songs, a special musical program called 40 Years of Truco Love Songs premiered in September, where live musicians performed a compilation of his love songs with renewed harmony. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Truco with a certificate and memento in recognition of his 40-year achievement as a songwriter and composer. Congratulations and well done.
Thank you very much. I'm so honored today, and I live in Garden Grove for more than 15 years. I've been around the world. When I was young, I traveled to play in the band. But I have to tell you, Garden Grove is the best in the world. That's true, because five minutes, five minutes from my house, I can have the best food in the world. Either Korean, Thailand, Vietnamese, Japanese, we have it all here, five minutes. My life is about five minutes now. From my house to my company SPTN in Garden Grove, five minutes. From my house to do for the fitness center, five minutes. From my house for the Vietnamese, you know, food, five minutes. Korean food, mine, five minutes. Everything is five minutes. I love this city very, very much. I'm such honored. Thank you very much.
And your song is also five minutes.
Alrighty, and I see Kia Mortasavi and Charlie Larwin here for item 1B. Does anyone want to introduce it or just let them go?
Item 1B is an update on the Measure M2 Streets and Roads Milestone and on the Rails to Trails in Garden Grove. It's presented by the Orange County Transportation Authority. And we do have some PowerPoint presentations.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Kia Mortasavi, I'm here on behalf of Orange County Transportation Authority. And it's kind of a serendipitous moment for us because two weeks ago, we celebrated the 50th birthday of providing public transit in Orange County. And some of you may know that the headquarters for OCTD, Orange County Transit District, is your city hall. So it's kind of ironic that we're here tonight. And so as I drove in here tonight, I just had to take a moment and kind of enjoy the moment. But 50 years. But one of the things about bus transit is that it helps every community connect to opportunities, services, and ultimately to one another. But we need good roads to make that transit work. And really, the topic of my presentation is about what we are doing in Orange County to keep our roads and transport, specifically roads and traffic signals and pavement in good condition. So let me see. Who has the clicker? Okay, there we go. Sorry. Forgot. So as some of you know, Orange County has a half-cent local sales tax measure. So that's money that's generated locally and is spent locally. 99% of money, this money basically goes to actual projects. 1% is spent for administration. But it's all spent basically locally. And it's spread about 43% for freeway projects as well, and then 32% for streets and roads and 25% for transit. So a little bit more kind of in-depth a little bit about the, what we do for local streets and roads. Basically, three categories. One is to help cities improve local streets by either closing gaps in their street system or you have maybe a missing lane in some between intersections. Fixing the intersections, maybe you need an extra left turn lane or right turn lane, as well as making the interface with the freeway system work better. As cars trying to get in off the freeways, make those work better. The other one is intersection signal synchronization project, program. This is where every city does a good job of synchronizing signals within their city. But the trick here is how do you make it go across jurisdictions? 80% of the trips basically starts in one city, but they all go to another city. Likewise, a lot of people are starting their trips outside your city, but they're coming to your city. So the trick is trying to make them work and take a seamless trip. And then the last one is literally local streets. Those are monies that come directly to your city, and your city basically opts to prioritize and put those towards your local needs. So it, you know, in short, it helps really makes the, allows us to keep up with population growth, basically meet the needs of our communities and certain, and respect the services. Allows us to do those added things that we want to do. For example, fix the curb cuts for handicapped access to sidewalks and all of those other things. And so you could see that, you know, the breakdown on how it goes. So specific to your city, you could see that there is about $35 million total that's been invested in Orange, in city of Garden Grove in the last 11 years. And the reason that we're here, just, you know, I should mention, is that overall, countywide, in month of September, we reached a billion dollars for the program hole for the county. And so of that amount, 35 million was directly in city of Garden Grove, your city. So about $1.6 million to improve local streets, about $3.2 million to improve traffic signals, and $28 million that your city used to either do rehabilitation projects, keep your rehab, your streets in good shape, or do intersection improvements at your choice. So ultimately, it has helped us keep it, you know, keep the streets in good shape. But importantly, help city have a reliable and predictable funding source so you can forecast your future improvements. You will, Measure M is going to go for another 19 years, and you will know that in seven years exactly what you're going to get. And so you can plan your city improvements, with street improvements specifically, you know, with certainty. So that's the basically bottom line. A billion dollars in Orange County, 35 million dollars in your city, and helps connect your communities. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Kia. Colleagues, any questions or comments on that?
Yes, my apologies.
No, no question, just a comment. I was just pointing out to council member Klaufenstein our excitement over the improvements to Hester and Lamston. That was a very problematic area. And I know my, our first year in office, there was a pedestrian death. And so we had been talking about that one for a while. And I remember when the new lights came in, I took a picture and I walked by it and I touched it. I was very much of a infrastructure traffic light geek. So I was really excited for when it came. So I just want to say kudos and thank you.
Kia, Charlie, Andrea, are you coming up too?
Yes.
Oh. Alright.
This is part two today.
Let's do it.
So good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Charlie Larwood, and I'm the manager for transportation planning at the Orange County Transportation Authority. And tonight, we're really excited to give you a brief overview on an upcoming study that we're doing called the Garden Grove to Santa Ana Rails to Trails Study. And this study will complete the environmental phase, which includes preliminary engineering for an active transportation facility along the Pacific Electric or PE right-of-way. Let's see if I can get this the first time. Nope. For the study limits, we're going to be studying 3.1 miles of OCTA-owned property. Again, that's the former PE Pacific Electric right-of-way, as I mentioned. It's located between Rate Street on the southeast end and Euclid Avenue on the northwest end. And the study is also going to look at .85 miles of the Wintersburg Channel. And that's a county flood control channel. And we'll be looking for a potential connection to the existing cycle track bike lanes that are on Hazard Avenue. When it's implemented, this trail will provide excellent non-motorized connections to the Santa Ana, or to the Santa Ana River Bike Trail, downtown Garden Grove and Santa Ana, as well as access to the Orange County Civic Center. The project study, we anticipate starting that in the spring of next year, in 2023. And we hope to have it done in about two years. Once it's completed, the study will support the advancement of future projects, final design, and of course, the construction of the project, we hope, will come thereafter. That's the overview. We've received, let's see, I should get my notes here. This past summer, the Orange County Board of Directors approved $3 million in federal grant funds for the study. So it is fully funded. And it's consistent with local and regional planning documents, including both Imagine Garden Grove and the city's Active Streets Master Plan, the Santa Ana Active Transportation Plan, and two OCTA documents, our Regional Bike Ways Strategy that we wrapped up in 2015. So we've been studying this for quite a while now. And the countywide OC Active Plan as well. Some of the key challenges that we're anticipating, we're proposing to reuse the historic PE right-of-way bridge that crosses the Santa Ana River. We completed a high-level engineering study back in 2022, and it checked out. And this study will be the final word on whether or not we can use that bridge. And so we're really keeping our fingers crossed for that. Hopefully, we'll be able to use it. We also have intersections and roadway crossings. There are 10, and they cross diagonally on the PE right-of-way, which you all know. So we need to figure out a way to cross that safely, either diagonally right there where it comes out, or turning left or right and going up to the signal and coming back around. So we'll look at that as well. And then finally, funding, which we need to find money for final design and for construction of the project, as well as maintenance and operations of this facility. These do, things do cost for lighting, water, landscaping, those types of things. The good news is that there's a lot more money available, both federally and statewide. So once this project is complete, it will be shelf-ready for the city of Santa Ana or Garden Grove or some combination of partnership to go after those dollars to get this thing built for the community. And as far as next steps, we plan to have a consultant onboard by the end of the year. And again, we'll start this project in the springtime. And as part of our outreach efforts, we will definitely be engaging both the cities of Garden Grove and Santa Ana as well as working with stakeholders and community-based organizations. Some of our key partnerships will be with Caltrans, of course, the cities of Santa Ana and Garden Grove, and the Orange County Flood Control District for that Wintersburg Channel. And then finally, I just wanted to add that we invite a member of the city staff to be on our project development team for the technical part of the study. So that completes my presentation. I'd be happy to hear some feedback or any comments you might have. Thank you.
Thanks. Colleagues, questions, comments? I'd just like to say it's an honor that I also get to serve on the OCTA board. It's staggering the amount of volume of work that that organization does. Very well-polished machine, and it's been a wonderful learning experience for me. But Measure M2, what a terrific program over the years, all the money that it brings back for, you know, for keeping our infrastructure intact and bringing projects forward here in the county throughout, from throughout the state. And then personally, I'm a huge proponent of active transportation. I just love everything that you're working on, Charlie, and everything that we do in that regard. So looking forward to seeing more and more of that come through.
I just wanted to add one thing. I remember sitting in your office, I think it was 2008, 2010, and you said, "If we can just get the trail over to the Santa Ana River, which is now a part of the OC loop, then people in Santa Ana can ride, turn right, they can ride to the beach, they can go up towards Riverside, and we're getting one step closer to that." So I'm very excited.
Yep, we sure are. We sure are. Exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we will now go on to oral communications. I do have several cards, starting with Tom Raiber.
Hi, I'm Tom Raiber. Save our children. Paula the Penis. Am I shocking everybody? San Diego allows Paula the Penis to go to school and walk around as a penis and a scrotum. Is Garden Grove going to have Victor the Vagina walking around the schools? Are you going to say no and stop all this BS that this transgender stuff is doing? Miscarriages has been up since the pandemic. If you look at the stats, they're between 82% and 366%. How many children need to be lost because of the pandemic? Joey the Kangaroo just came out a couple days ago. 18 to 25 transgenders born as a male must register for the military draft. Transgenders born as a female do not. I'm here today, the fifth time, talking about 9.18.150.010. I came here and hand-delivered the emails, and still no response. So I will say each name separately, and hand them over to the city clerk, Steve Jones. Oh, and by the way, I just sent the email before this meeting. Steve Jones. Scott Stiles, even though I sent two emails, he's only getting one copy here. Maria Stipes. Teresa, the city clerk. Lisa Kim. And David Dent. Now, what I understand is, you guys aren't doing nothing because you guys are doing a magical changing of the codes right now. You can't backdate a code as... I guess I still got time, it's not up there. So I'm going to continue. So can you backdate anything? And the answer is no. You cannot backdate a contract. For example, Ohio, you all think is the 17th state. It is not. It's the 50th state. If you go ahead and look at Ohio, they turned in the paperwork on March 1st, 1803. They did not turn the paperwork on March 3rd, 1803. They waited 150 years. When they want to celebrate 150-year celebration, the government stopped them because they never turned the paperwork in. August 7th, 1953, is when they turned the paperwork in. You can go ahead and ask anybody, every state gets a number. So therefore, we're not a state of, we're not part of the union, because anything past 16 is illegal, because the paperwork wasn't turned in on the 17th. Eisenhower had no right to do what he did. Go ahead and look at Ohio. So with that said, I'm out, and Tom.
All righty then.
Good evening, everyone. For the past couple of weeks, I've been here announcing our event, Communities Come Together, occurring on October 18th. Mayor Jones, city council staff, and City of Garden Grove staff, I'm inviting you all to the Communities Come Together event next Tuesday, October 18th, at the Community Meeting Center from 5 to 7:00. We would love to see you all there to support us. For this event, we partnered Garden Grove Neighborhood Association and Garden Grove PD to assist our special needs community in practicing safety strategies such as crossing the street, interacting with the officers, selecting good and bad candy, and lastly, calling 911. We hope to impact as many families so they can learn to be safe in our community. Thank you to GGN A for all your support, Maureen, Stephanie, and Kelly at Garden Grove PD. I'll go ahead and leave the flyer so you guys can go ahead and take a look at it. So I hope to see you all next Tuesday. October 18th, 5 to 7:00.
Please, you, uh, October 18th, 5 to 7:00, at CMC. Go out, go out.
Please join us.
Hope to see you guys there.
Good evening, everybody. I guess you all know who I am. I want to thank you guys for picking up the patrols over there where we live. It's helped out a lot. We still have a couple problems, though. If there's any way to get the patrols to come through our area in the morning time, especially between 4:00 and 7:00 in the morning, we got a lot of guys, in fact, even yesterday morning, the manager of our apartment hollered at me, and I came down, there were two guys cooking some drugs, and one guy was sticking it in his arm. And I've got pictures in my phone right here of the riverbed. God, please, you guys, you're going to have to either make a park or put a fence around that whole area, and just to stop the traffic going through. The wall is broken right by my garage, right there, at 9381 Salini Avenue in the back. And then behind that is where the railroad tracks were, and then the riverbed. I got pictures right here of people jumping down, handing their bikes down. I got pictures of the riverbed shooting up towards Chapman. There's encampments down there again. I don't know if it's the county or if it's the city, but please, we got to hit them again. You guys did it once before, and it cleaned it out fairly well, but it's getting really bad, and the traffic is getting way bad in there. All I'm doing is asking for help. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anybody else wishing to speak that did not submit a pink card?
May I speak one more time, please?
Come on up.
There is one other issue, and it has to do with the animal hospital. From my understanding, they're going to be, they're remodeling it because of the water damage, there was a lot of damage done to that building, and they're going to be opening up in the next couple of months. There's a big parking issue there. If there's any way they could take the line, that the people that line up for that place, and have them go up Gilbert. That's a commercial building on a commercial street. Their line should go up that way, not on Salini coming behind us. The parking lots get filled up very quickly, and if there's any way that they could use the parking lot right next to the Social Security Building, that has to do with the mall. I know, because I worked with the security over on that other side there, and they never even used that there. In fact, they just chased campers out of there and stuff like that. The animal hospital could use that for their customers. And with a line going up that way, it'd be easier and more convenient for everybody. Please give it a thought, and I'll get back with you all, and maybe we can work it out. And I'd like someone, please, to take a look at these pictures that I got of these people going down in the riverbed. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will close oral communications, and thereafter, we're going to recess over to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Brightigan? Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones.
Here. All right, we already did oral communications, consent items, just receive and follow the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Called a vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. And that takes us on to consent items, recommended the items 3A through 3H be acted on.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, my bad. Sorry. Hold on. I'm going to pull one out of order, because we've got some folks here from the Elks waiting, so I was supposed to do that earlier, and I forgot, and I just got reminded. Hold on, hold on one second, though, before you come up. We still have to do one thing. I'd like to pull 3A and take action on 3A first. So if I can pull 3A and then motion that, if I can get a second. Second. Okay, called a vote. All righty, now may I ask you guys to come forward, and we would like to...
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Present you with a proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Jones and the council members. I am David Skelton. Of course, you know me, man of the year for City Garden Grove, thank you for that. But a number of our members here are supporting Red Ribbon Week, Drug Awareness, and our national mascot, Elmore, the Elk, Elmo, Elroy. Yeah, that guy too. So he represents drug awareness for the United States of America, so... So, anyway, I know the proclamation has been being read for the Garden Grove Elks Lodge for their participation in Drug Awareness Week, Red Ribbon Week, and we do thank you very much for that and for recognizing the Garden Grove Elks Lodge Number 1952, which I know a number of you are members. So Teresa, would you, Teresa is our Drug Awareness Chairman for the lodge, so there you go.
Okay. Hi, good evening, Mayor and city council members. This is our fabulous Elroy, who's well-known through the Garden Grove District, especially at the Strawberry Festival. He's a fan favorite. But I did just, I want to give just a brief read, if I may, on the origin of Red Ribbon Week. So bear with me, I didn't have time to really print it out, so it's on my phone in small letters. So my glasses just aren't strong enough. So this is about a two-minute read, and this is where the Red Ribbon Week originated from. Enrique Kiki Camanera was born in Mexicali, Baja, California, on July 26, 1947. In 1956, he and his family moved to nearby Callexico, California. In 1970, Camanera joined the Callexico Police Department, where he was later assigned to El Centro, where he worked as a narcotics investigator for Imperial County. In 1974, Enrique became a special agent with the DEA. Camanera wanted to make an impact in his country, but his family was very worried. His mother even tried to talk him out of becoming a special agent, but Kiki refused, saying that, "Even if I'm only one person, I can make a difference." During the early 1980s, Enrique was assigned to Mexico, where he was on tri, where he was, I'm sorry, where he was on the trail of Mexican marijuana and cocaine drug traffickers. In 1985, during Enrique's time in Mexico, Enrique Camanera came dangerously close to exposing top leaders of a multi-billion-dollar drug pipeline in this country. Because of this, he was scheduled to be moved to another assignment in 1985. But sadly, in 1985, on February 2nd at 2:00 PM, he was kidnapped by five members, by five members, I'm sorry, by five means, I can't read. He left the American consulate in Guadalajara, Mexico. Oops, I'm so sorry, people. I should have printed this out. Okay, I don't have much more. Enrique Camanera's legacy lives on. He left behind his wife, Geneva Mika Camanera, and their three sons, Enrique, Danielle, and Eric. Camanera sacrificed his life in the fight against drugs, and members of his, of his community wanting to do something to remember him. And this is where Red Ribbon Week was born. Red Ribbon Week started in Camanera's hometown of Callexico, but soon gained momentum across the nation. 1988 was the first national Red Ribbon Week, which was created by the National Family Partnership and the NFP, continues to coordinate the campaign for families, schools, and communities across the nation each year. Presently today, people in communities across the country continue to celebrate Red Ribbon Week. The Elks Organization, through the DAP Program, the Drug Awareness Program, is the largest volunteer drug awareness program in the United States, continually striving to work with our community of Garden Grove to promote drug awareness. We are very proud of our dedicated army of volunteers who freely give their time and talents to the most, this most notable cause. The Elks are committed to eliminate the use and abuse of illegal drugs by all members of society, and believe that to ensure a bright future for our country, it is essential that our children be raised in a drug-free environment. I want to thank Mayor Jones and the city council Garden Grove members for having Garden Grove Lodge Number 1952 this evening, and officially proclaiming the city of Garden Grove being recognized for Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through October 31st, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please hang tight. I'm going to come present you with a framed proclamation that we have for you guys.
You going to do it right there, Steve?
This kind of photo?
Still about the stool at John?
It's all right.
Right there? A little more to the right.
John, you need a stool this time.
Get right there. One, two, three. One more. One, two. There you go. Got it.
You had the tiptoe?
I never miss an opportunity, but Thursday night, we're having police and fire meeting open to members and our guests.
And we will presenting Enrique Camanera award that night.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, back to consent items, recommended the items 3B through 3H be acted on simultaneously, unless anyone would like to pull any items, or else a motion? What was the motion? Called a vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Items for consideration, 4A.
Item 4A is approval of a comprehensive memorandum of understanding with the cities of Fountain Valley and Westminster for development of the future Central Cities Navigation Center at 13871 West Street, and approve an interim lease agreement with West Street Investments, LLC. And Ms. Lisa Kim is here to give the report.
Madam Clerk, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. For your consideration, this evening is a follow-up to the June action taken by the city council, in which a framework for a memorandum of understanding was initially approved. Staff was directed to finalize negotiations for a comprehensive MLU with the cities of Fountain Valley and Westminster to enhance regional efforts to address homelessness in this, within the central service planning area. The comprehensive MLU provides for partnership in the financial and operational areas while securing a regional competitive priority within this central spa, and also provide for future funding opportunities. Serving as the host city in which the proposed Central Cities Navigation Center will be located, Garden Grove will administer responsibilities associated with property acquisition, construction, build-out of the future Central Cities Navigation Center in partnership with the two cities. The cost allocation plan outlined in the comprehensive MLU are described in two parts. Part one is acquisition and construction, or startup costs, and part two is the annual program operations. So noted in your staff report, specific to the table for acquisition and construction, the estimates for the city's contribution, this is Fountain Valley, Westminster, and Garden Grove, is approximately $8.3 million. Garden Grove's pro-rata share is approximately $4.89 million, or 59%. This calculation is based on a pro-rata share beds allocated to each city. Noted in part two, for operational program cost for the city's contribution is estimated to be $2.25 million. to be $2.3 million annually. For Garden Grove, our fair share is approximately $1 million annually. Additional provisions of the comprehensive MOU are detailed in the staff reports relating to term, guest capacity, and including termination provisions as well. I would also note that the preparation of an annual report and audit detailing the goals and objectives, guest capacity, operating plan, and review of the cost allocation plan will be reported annually to the City Council. Some next steps to keep in mind going forward, the RFP for the service provider, which is the operator that will operate the navigation center on behalf of the cities, is expected to be released this Friday. To memorialize the funding commitment with the county of Orange of approximately $11.5 million towards the project, an MOU will be brought back to the City Council for consideration at a meeting in November. The RFP for construction and build-out of the project is slated to be released sometime in December or early January. Lastly, at the last council meeting, the City Council approved a purchase agreement for 13871 West Street, which will serve as the home for their Central Cities Navigation Center. The property owner has identified an exchange property and has requested an acceleration of escrow closing for November 1st of this year. They have also requested a interim lease, a leaseback for the property until their future location is prepared for occupancy, which will take anywhere between three to six months. The total leasable area is approximately 11,360, 76 square feet. We've negotiated a market rent of $1.50 per square foot, which translates to approximately $17,000 a month in lease rent to the cities. And this concludes my staff report and I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks Lisa. Go ahead, Fat.
This MOU, I'm very confident about Garden Grove and Fountain Valley participation. A little bit unclear about Westminster City involvement. I don't know whether it is dependent upon the status of Westminster Measure Y, I believe, which is a continuation of their 1% sale tax. I've been at a few city Westminster council meeting and I was aware that their city staff advise a city council that in the event that the 1% sales tax is not continued, they will run into serious financial problem and may even have to resort to bankruptcy. If, I think, I hope that their 1% sale tax will pass and they will not run into financial issue, but in the event that it is not passed, the city management estimate that they, if it is not passed, their financial will probably run into big problem in about a year and a half and they may have to be declared bankrupt. If that is the case, how does that impact their ability to participate with this project as this is in the, is outlined in the MOU here?
I'll just add a couple things, Councilman. Obviously, you know, each city has to figure out their own finances for how they want to fund their participation of it. I'm guessing that a lot of what they're thinking about is using some of their federal ARPA funds possibly, which are eligible for this and which could not be used for general fund activities that might, you know, if they were to find themselves in that predicament. So I think they're probably trying to use restricted funds that could only be used for homeless sort of activities and can't be used for other things. So unless the staff have some other comments, I think that's how they're trying to fund it.
That's, that's good to know. And even in the event that somehow that funding that they reserve for this is not available, do we have any measure to, to address that shortfall? Like, is there a way for us to, you know, pick up the part that they are left? Let's just say, for example, they have many other programs that they have to use some of the fund that they think, that they originally think that they can allocate 100% for this. Let's just say they, they now have to divide that up and allocate for some other program that it can be used for. And so instead of 22 beds, they are now can, can handle 11 beds. Can we deal with that? And so we can, we can have other means to, you know, to address that shortfall coming from, from Westminster?
Right. One of the things we've been talking about internally as, as a team of the three cities when we're trying to work this out is we know point-in-time numbers are going to change over 10 years, conditions will change, and we're probably, I think what we envision is some sort of operational committee, admin committee that will, at the end of each year, sort of recalibrate things, look at the number of beds, and then if we need to make adjustments that we can make adjustments that helps each city. If it's significant, obviously, we'd have to come back and get approval of our respective city councils. But we want to have, we don't want to have to change, change it every day, you know, but we, but we do want to have look backs every, periodically to look and see how we're doing, what the numbers are looking like. Do we need more beds? Does this city not need as many beds? So I think that'll, that'll change a little bit over time. We want to be flexible to do that if we need to.
Okay. Go ahead, George.
Yeah. MOU, from what I'm understanding, it's a 10-year operational plan with two, five-year automatic extensions, for lack of a better term. How does the extension process work?
The extensions are not automatic, so 60 days before the end of the then existing term, the parties can get together and agree whether to extend it another five years.
So it's basically contractual for the first 10 and then-
Yes. Yeah, so you're-
Up to 20 with the two extensions, okay.
Yeah, you're agreeing to be tied in for 10 years. There are provisions for a city wanting to come out, they will pay liquidated damages, so there's a poison pill. Yeah, you can come out, but you, you basically, all the money that you put into it, you lose, plus you pay a penalty. Well, I can't say penalty publicly, liquidated damages. So they pay liquidated damages because it would otherwise be unfair to the other parties that are continuing to, to operate with all the seed money that was put into it upfront.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Oh, good. Go ahead.
Just to be clear for me, right? So I really like this project, but it's just to be clear. There is two parts of this MOU. One cost would be the acquisition and construction cost and the other is the operational cost. So let's just say we have three cities here and then each city will share a portion of the construction cost. For example, our cost is close to $5 million, Fountain Valley is about 1.3, and Westminster is about 2.1. And Westminster is committed to 4 now, 22 beds, and Garden Grove is 50 and Fountain Valley is 13. But if they, let's just say after years, they think they're, they need to bring down their number of beds that they needed, they only need 11, just, just for the sake of the understanding what's going on here. Do they still commit it to a 2.1 billion construction cost or because the number of beds is going down, their construction cost is also going down?
I could address that. The original startup cost is a fixed cost. You know, we can't go back and be retroactive in a pro-rata share of reduction. All the three cities and the county is committed to start up this project, which is the, as you summarize, Councilmember Bowie, it's $8.3 million for the cities in addition to $5.3 million for tenant improvement contributed by the county. So that's $13 million to start up the project, acquisition, build-out, and get it ready, fixturized. Then the operating cost is where a future allocation could be adjusted, as City Manager Stiles alluded to, that depending on the point-in-time count and the need in four years, there may be a slight adjustment or it may be fixed in time. And that's part of the report that staff will bring back annually to recap, has everybody met their numbers? Are there any adjustments that are needed among the three participating cities? What are the reasons for the adjustments? And we will have metrics and data that shows each city's utilization of their respective beds during the annual period. So there is no retro for the startup cost, but there may be some adjustment going forward relating to program operations.
Great, thank you. So now if people are asking about it, at least I have a little more information to explain how this, this is being structured. Thank you so much, Lisa.
The other thing I might mention that we'll be bringing back to council in the next couple, in the next couple meetings is our MOU with the city of Orange. We're the host city, so we have to have a specific MOU just with the city of Garden Grove and the county. And that's to fund, and as you'll recall, the county's commitment is for, for some of the build-out costs, but it's also 625, $625,000 a year that they're committing to the operational costs for 10 years. So that's factored in too on what, how the cities are trying to figure out what their, their long-term costs are going to be. So you'll, we'll be bringing that MOU with the county to you, you know, shortly.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, one, I cannot stress how important this project is for the city of Garden Grove and our surrounding cities. We know as we drive along and we talk to our neighbors and we're out there ourselves, this is the number one top priority. And so it's really important that we ourselves are taking charge of our city and doing quote-unquote "our fair share." And I really want to give kudos to staff for working with the other cities and for the county because it's really going to take collaboration at all levels. And then hopefully at some point, we can draw down state and federal dollars for this or for projects that feed into our continuum of care. So just can't stress the importance and significance of this project. I'm excited to have it in my district, along with a lot of other projects that are coming underway. And I want to thank staff for all of their hard work. I know we, we started this with sort of three different iterations ago with different properties and the roller coaster of emotion, stress, and time devoted to that, especially Lisa, I apologize, but it's, it's great to see it come to fruition. You know, myself and the mayor the other day visited in Campanes along the freeway on the Calhoun's property and it really does illuminate for us the difficulty it is to have to walk with, work with other agencies, especially others that have far larger jurisdictions than ours to work with. And so it really does take us being good and friendly neighbors and friendly to our other agencies to get this work done, to be good partners and to establish that trust and that, that relationship to get this work done. So I want to give tremendous kudos to staff, to PD, to Public Works, and to my colleagues for helping push this across the finish line. And with that, I would like to make the motion to approve.
Second. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alrighty, 4B, RJ Noble.
Item 4B is awarded contract to RJ Noble Company for city project number CP 1316,000, Garden Grove Boulevard Rehabilitation. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy, Mr. Mayor, Members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to award a contract to RJ Noble Company to rehabilitate Garden Grove Boulevard from Harbor Boulevard to Fairview Street. In general, the rehabilitation work will include full depth reclamation of failed areas, cold milling of existing pavement and replacement with an AC overlay cap, installation of asphalt-rubber aggregate membrane, repair and upgrade of various concrete work in the public right-of-way, restoration of traffic signing, striping, and pavement markings, and the re-establishment of the street centerline ties and monuments. All this work is to be completed at a cost of just over $2 million. Staff received and opened three qualified bids on September 21st of this year, and staff found RJ Noble to be the lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award this contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in February of next year and should be complete by summer. There is a delay in the start of the work due to supply chain type issues. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with Measure M2 funds and gas tax. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions or comments?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, takes us to ordinances presented for a second reading and adoption. Item 5A.
Item 5A is second reading ordinance number 2939 entitled An Ordnance of the City Council of the city of Garden Grove Approving Amendment Number A 352022 to amend Title IX Land Use of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to Make Focus Zoning Amendments to Implement Various Policies and Programs Set forth in the General Plan Housing Element and Land Use Element and to Ensure Compliance with Applicable State Housing Laws.
Alright, thank you. Colleagues?
Move to approve.
5A, second reading.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, thank you. Matters is next, but let's take a short break before we start that. So hang tight, Patricia. I know you've got an item on there and then whatever other. Yeah, let's take a quick break. Financial position and results of operations as requested by City Manager Scott Stiles.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's been a little while since we've had a little, a financial update. I thought it'd be timely. It's good time for our finance director to update us on the close of the fiscal year, talk a little bit about some of the revenue trends that we're seeing. And then this will be a good entree into as we prepare for our retreat in March. And we'll have more, obviously more updated information for you then, how we're looking, going into our next biennial budget. So Patricia Song, our finance director, will update us on some of this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This is an update on the city's preliminary operating results for the fiscal year ended on June 30th, 2022. We believe it is important to provide this update since in June, we amended our budget for this year and we added several important projects and initiatives totaled over 20 million. And that was based on the then projected surpluses from the general fund. This is a slide from our June budget amendment meeting. As a quick summary, we estimated a 23 million budget surplus for fiscal year 2122 and programmed these funds for several major programs, including a navigation center in the amount of 7 million, an additional funding of 8 million for the public safety police facility and civic center project. We also increased our general fund stability reserve by 3 million to comply with our council policy, established a Buildings and Facilities Rehabilitation Internal Service Fund with initial funding of 3 million, and also replenished the workers' compensation fund for 1.6 million to meet the actually determined funding level. Now, the finance department is working on closing the books for fiscal year 2122. And I'd like to take this opportunity to circle back with you on the June projections with unaudited financials. Good news is that for the general fund, we do show the year will close with revenues higher than our June projection. In June, we estimated our overall general fund revenue for the year would be 178 million. And as of September, the preliminary revenue was 188 million. The higher revenue is largely due to stronger than expected performances in all three major city tax revenues. Property tax, for example, has historically come in above the budgeted amount due to prior year and supplemental payments from property taxes. And these amounts are very difficult to predict because, you know, we don't, we can't, we don't know how people are paying, if the property is going to be transferred. So we, it usually comes lower than expected. And we also have estimated that, well, let me just go back to the previous slide. We have estimated the property tax will close the year by 4 million in excess to what we estimated for June. Sales tax has been realizing growth exceeding the pre-pandemic levels as well. We all feel the high inflation which is causing the economy to slow down. However, it does provide for additional sales tax revenue in the short term due to higher prices. Current records indicate sales tax will reach nearly 59 million for the year, which represents an increase of 19% from the previous year. The city's third largest general fund revenue source, transient occupancy tax, also showed improvement over the previous two years. April, May and June's activity level all exceeded our single highest months before the pandemic. A total of 23 million in TOT revenue is reported for fiscal year 2122, which is just about, about 11% lower than the pre-pandemic peak. The strong performances in 2122 does not shield us from vulnerabilities most agencies are facing in the current economy. As a matter of fact, many believe the brief economic expansion is behind us and governments at both state and local levels are structuring their budgets in preparation for the next recession by increasing reserve level, lowering spending and lowering the debt. This slide here shows citywide revenue for fiscal year 2122. All governmental funds and water, sewer and refuse funds had realized higher than budgeted revenue amounts. For governmental funds other than the general fund, the favorable variance was primarily due to more development activities, new grants funding from CDBG, emergency shelter program and home programs. Most of these additional allocations were pandemic-related relief funds that are being deployed via various programs the city is offering to our community. The 16 million budget variance for successor agency was directly related to the development projects that are on the state-approved recognized obligation payment schedule. And some budgetary discrepancies, it's the same, similar difference is shown on the expenditure side. So speaking of expenses, despite the strong performance in the revenue category, staff has continued to work diligently to stay within budget on the expenses side. One-time funds such as the state and local fiscal recovery funds were committed to one-time uses that have long-lasting positive impact to our community. Many of these projects will be carried out in multiple years, and that was one of the primary reasons you see large unspent appropriations across all city funds on this slide. This one is a snapshot of the citywide expenses as of June 30th, 2022. As just mentioned, most of the funds carry a pretty significant favorable variance, meaning actual expenditures were much lower than what we budgeted for. For the general fund, among the total 44 million of unspent appropriations for the year, 40 million was for capital projects, including 17 and a half for street pavement program and $22 million for civic center, public safety building and city's navigation center. We also estimate about $3 million in personnel saving due to vacancies. Similarly, for governmental funds other than the general fund, there was $19 million unspent largely due to capital improvement projects that spent over multiple years. Streets-related projects carried a budget balance about 6 million at fiscal year end, and over 4 million grant-funded projects were continued into the next year, into the current year. And other capital projects funded by development impact fees, special assessments and other restricted revenues had combined balance of over 5 million. Both water and sewer enterprise funds had multiple ongoing capital projects with significant budget balances that were carried over into the current year. And again, 17 million remaining balance for the successor agency is rolled over to the current year to meet future development and disposition agreement obligations. So let's talk a little bit about the pension obligation bonds. In early March, staff brought forward a resolution to the city council requesting for the approval of the issuance of a pension obligation bond. This is to save on the long-term for our pension liabilities, the unfunded portion. Back then, our underwriter estimated a net present value savings close to 40% of our current unfunded liability and a cash flow savings of nearly 200 million over the next 23 years. As we all know, the Federal Reserve's mandatory tightening efforts are moving at a historical pace. The Fed has raised interest rates 150 basis points in 2022, which drastically changed the municipal bond market condition. In June, revised estimates showed potential savings from financing or unfunded pension liability got reduced by more than half. In July, CalPERS announced their net investment loss for the year of over 6%, and this translated to an increased pension liability for the city for over 24 million, which will start impacting our annual contribution starting in 2024. This amount will be amortized over five years at the discount rate of 6.8%. And our financing team incorporated this investment loss into the total amount to be financed and came up with a little better scenario compared to June. And this is the one showing on the far right, is the August projection. But still, you can see the potential savings are very low, not very low, but a lot lower than what we have projected in the beginning of the year. As inflation continues to drive the market volatility, staff is recommending postponing the issuance of the pension bonds. The good news is that we have completed the mandatory judicial validation process and we are able, we are able to issue the bonds when market becomes favorable again in the future to maximize cost savings. Looking ahead, as we move into our next biennial budget process, we continue to closely monitor the key economic indicators, focusing on the priorities set by the city council to address major community needs. Additionally, we understand the importance of leveraging good policymaking to cultivate a promising environment for businesses and residents. We will continue to implement key financial policies to maintain an efficient infrastructure and ensure smooth functioning of essential city services. In light of economic uncertainties, we will also continue to strengthen our financial sustainability through enhancing our revenue base and carefully review and prioritize our spending. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Patricia. Colleagues, any questions, comments? Alrighty then, we're doing well. Thank you for all that you're doing to keep tabs on it and thank you to our entire team for all of our diligence. Okay, matters from council members, Kim?
Just a happy birthday, Mayor.
I just have a quick comment. There was a gentleman that spoke tonight into oral communication, and in my personal opinion, he was way out of line. I think when people come in here to address the podium, yes, you have the right to speak in front of this council and in front of the public, but you don't need to be grotesque and disgusting in the comments that you make. You don't need to shock people with your comments. You can keep them professional and concise. And I think there has to be a certain level of tact and decorum in this room, and he did not have that this evening. So I just ask when people address this council to please come in here professionally and say what you have to say, but do it in a respectful manner. Thank you.
Well said. Val? Okay, thanks. Deidre?
Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. Also today is my second born son also turned to become, to be teenager officially today. So happy birthday, Ethan. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Might go to George.
Happy birthday? And that's all I got?
All right. All right. And last, to Councilmember John O'Neill, and he's got some touching words he wants to share, so.
Couple of things. I wanted to echo Councilwoman Klopstein's sentiments when I was thinking and hearing that tonight. Those, those comments were inappropriate and insensitive and really not necessary, but I understand they have a right to say what they want to say. But to me, I hear hate coming from that, so, insensitive. Anyway, I really wanted to speak on my uncle. My last living uncle passed away about a week and a half ago. Uncle Larry was my dad, John O'Neill, Jack O'Neill, as people knew him here in Garden Grove, his older brother. And the reason I want to, you know, he was a special guy. He was 96, World War II veteran, most energizing guy you've ever met. Never, never missed a day of work or school in his life, entire life, from what I'm told, and I believe it. He came back, got into the war. My dad was a little bit too young, came back from the war, went to college, got a pilot's license, went to work for American Airlines, met his wife. They were married in 1950. She's still alive. They were married 72 years until his passing. Again, decorated World War II veteran, worked for the Auto Club in New York, Manhattan, for 50 years. Painted houses at nights and weekends to put his children through college. That's the kind of guy he was, and just unbelievable. So he is the older brother to my father, Jack, by two years, and my mother, Dolores, who just passed a year ago. You know, I wish him and his family, I was going to read, you know, some of the survivors, Larry and Joan were married for 72 years. They had two sons, Sean and Darren. They have their wives Cindy and Laura O'Neill, their grandchildren, Colin, Casey, Kelly, Abigail, Andrew, and his great-grandson, Lucas. He's preceded in death by my parents, his parents, obviously, Lawrence and Gladys. And he was born in Buffalo, New York, and was quite a guy. Again, many medals, but that World War II victory medal, very proud of that. And he will be greatly missed. We were hoping he would make it to 100. He always told me, I didn't see him too much because he lived on the East Coast, and my parents moved out here in 1954 when they got married on the West Coast. So I only saw him occasionally, but he, when he did, when I did see him, he always said, "I'm going to live to 100. I'm going to live to 100." So I think he almost talked himself all the way there. And he was in pretty good health all the way to the end. So God bless him, wish him well, and thanks for, for listening.
General counsel, anything to report or any need for closed session after this?
Mayor, we did have a closed session on existing litigation earlier, and there is no reportable action out of that item.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Several quick little rapid-fire things I think you might be interested in. One is, you may have noticed our veteran banners went up yesterday. We have at least, I think, two of them in every one of your districts, and then in the central business district, we have a few more. So you'll start seeing those, and they'll be up for about a month. And then we take them down a few days, I think, a few days after Veterans Day is over. So always happy to see that. And I believe I'm starting to see that there's the group that's putting together a Veterans Day event at the Elks facility coming up this year, and we'll, you'll start to see more about that, I'm sure. Last night, I went to Westminster, had their community engagement meeting for the navigation center, and they had a good turnout of people that asked a lot of questions of the Westminster city manager and their police chief and their staff about how the navigation center was going to work. It was generally all very positive. People were, just like we are, excited that we're doing something. They want to get something going. They know it's an issue, just like we do. And so, and then I'll be going to the, Fountain Valley will have another engagement center, I think, next week or the week after, so I'll go to that too. And the three city managers were all supporting each other and working with each other on this. And as I mentioned, very shortly, we'll have the county MOU coming to you for your consideration as well. I did want to mention on another topic, our Garden Brook Senior Village is now open. People are moving in, but they have reopened the application process for interested people that would like to get into that building. We just put out a press release to that effect, and if people are interested, they can go to our website, they can contact the folks at the Garden Brook Senior Village and get on their list. So they have, as I understand it, they have studio and one-bedroom apartments available. They can go to the city's website. Eligible seniors can call 714-6, I'm sorry, let me start over, 714-462-5810. Or they can go to the city's website. The information about it is right on our front page right now, and they can find it. I think they're in the process of doing some translations of it, too. So if people are interested, we would ask them, the applicant's income must be one and a half times the rent. They're, they're available to households at or below 60%. They're, they're available to households at or below 60% of the Orange County area median income, 62 years age of age or older, and you pass a low-barrier background and screening test. So I hate to say it, but I'm eligible. Age-wise, I'm eligible, yes.
He needs somewhere to crash when his wife kicks him out.
Think of it as an all-inclusive resort.
Oh, my. Age-wise, I am eligible. I did also want to mention, and I've shared with council members, and I'll put it in our weekly managers memo this week, we are really walking down the road of a real interesting partnership potentially with CalOptima on a street medicine program that would supplement the work of our firefighters, our police officers, and our BLOC folks. So more to come with that. I think I'll maybe have somebody from CalOptima come to one of our next future meetings and give you a little bit of overview about what they were doing. We want to be very careful. It's nothing to do that would impede upon the work of our firefighter paramedics. It doesn't replace their work, it doesn't do any of that. We've already had meetings with them to make sure operationally, nobody's encroaching on anybody else's business. Maybe for small wound care, some prescription medication, some things like that, and then hopefully getting some people through that off the street and, you know, helping to reduce some of our numbers as well. So more to come on that street medicine program. And we should say, a number of you were at our American Family Housing Permanent Supportive Housing Project on Stewart Drive in Councilmember Wynn's District. If you didn't get a chance to go there, you should go by just to see the mural that's on it. It's really spectacular, and the young artist that did that mural was, it was quite beautiful, and it's eight units of our first permanent supportive housing that we have in the city. People were really excited. I think neighbors were excited. A lot of thanks goes to Lisa Kim and her staff for putting this whole project together. Obviously, American Family Housing, the bank that was involved in it.
Premier?
Premier Pacific, I think. Wow, tremendous work to help finance the project. And I, oh, and obviously, our Housing Authority, Danny Wynn and the folks at our Housing Authority helped participate to make the project happen. So just a beautiful project and a real good feather in our hat. And then the last thing I had, at our next meeting on October 25th, we're at 4:00. I think we're going to have a dedication of our new playground at Garden Grove Park down in, is that District 3 or 4?
3.
It's 3. It's 3, but it's right next to 4, too. So we'll have a, we'll have a dedication of that. John Montanes and his group are working on that, and so that will be at 4:00, I think, before our next council meeting. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we will stand adjourned. Enjoy the rest of your evening, everyone, and we'll see you again soon.